We'll call it order tonight's City Council meeting in the Committee of the Whole for June the 15th, 2021. City Council should have the minutes from the June 1st Committee of the Whole meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I have a move to approve?
Some moves.
Motion second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the minutes carry. Questions on the agenda, City Manager Crouch. Any questions for City Manager Crouch?
On item 9E under ordinances regarding the zoning ordinance amendments for governing short-term rentals, if that were to be denied unanimous consent, can you walk through what that means from a city perspective, like execution-wise?
Absolutely. As we talked about in the middle of March, it was going to be approximately a 90-day ramp-up on short-term rentals in terms of how we would be implementing the ordinance and beginning to notify residents or property owners whether they could remain a short-term rental or no longer remain one based on the zoning ordinance. We started sending those letters out in early June to those who were not eligible to be a short-term rental, but what we have not done is issued any business licenses. We have several requests for those business licenses, but the items here that are under clarification, we're adding some definitions about lodging and transient occupancy, as well as cleaning up a few things about home stays. And in doing that, and in the recommendation of our legal counsel, we have not issued any business licenses until that gets done. So if this is denied unanimous consent this evening, I believe our next meeting is July 6th, and it will delay us from now until July 6th, or really July 7th, 8th or so before we could on some other things without getting these things clarified.
Any other questions for the City Manager?
Mayor, I have one item.
Please.
Item 8E5, if you'll turn to your agendas. Item 8E5 is a contract with JLD Enterprises. It's the award of a bid for the roundabout at Cox and Wire. And I feel like we have been working on this project for two years, which we have. And in the two years that we've been working on this project, Aldott was very generous and offered to give us a grant, and we slowed our project down. And then I came to you guys, I don't know, six months ago or so, and said, Aldott's slowing the bid letting down. They're going to delay us till probably December, January of 2021 before we can get started. And I asked the council's permission to proceed with the project anyway. We felt it was critical, and you agreed with my recommendation. Then we came back to you a few months ago and said, hey, this is really great. Aldott wants to give us money again, and there's not going to be a delay. And then the city engineer came to me at 4:00 this afternoon and said, guess what? Aldott called and said, you bid the project, we haven't approved this yet, and if you award the project at tonight's council meeting, you lose the $450,000 of grant funding that we told you we would give you. At this stage, if we want Aldott's $450,000, we will have to not award a bid tonight, pull it from the agenda, and wait until they approve the grant, and then we have to go back out to bid and rebid the whole item. The city engineer and Allison, we have no idea what this delay means. It could be 90 days. Rebidding it will take us about 60 days once we get the green light. And so my request, and based on our previous discussions tonight, is that you consider awarding it anyway with 100% general fund, and then a what's in your agenda packet, but the bid award amount would be the same. It does not impact JLD Enterprises, it only impacts our general fund. Allison, do you have anything to add that I missed?
Megan, when we started down this line, the council decided initially that it was in the best interest of our community to fund this whole project, and there was no thought or even hope that there would be any money following this from Aldott or anywhere else, correct?
Correct. And then Aldott approached us, so we opted we would delay slightly our designs and other things, because the grant amount, Allison, do you recall, was paying for probably 80% of it?
Yeah, 90-10.
90-10. And then we walked away from the 90-10 because of timing that was going to push us to delivery of the project and beginning construction in the late fall or winter of this year and into 2022. Then Aldott came back and said, now we'll give you $450,000, basically no strings attached, and now that's been pulled again, which is they're committed to the money, but now they're telling us something different than we understood, which is unless we've approved this 450,000, we can't even go to bid. We've already bid the project and we're ready to award it. So I'm telling you, yes, half a million dollars, $450,000 is a lot of money, but we also have a timing issue here. And we have football season upon us. Yes, this will be under construction during football season if we award now, but intersection will remain open between football games. We may have some closure times where we need to get work done, but the longer we wait, and as we've kind of said in our capital stack for the last several years, we have to perform and we have to deliver projects, including during football season. It is very hard to get infrastructure projects delivered in a timely manner.
What's the approximate time of this project to be?
Allison, is it 180-day contract?
The contract time's 150 days. So based on the contract that we've set up, we should be finished in November, if all goes well.
If all goes well.
If it goes like Cox Road's going, I'll be dead and gone, boy.
That's without rain delays, of course, because you had days for rain delays. So yeah, that's the contract time, but basically, we cannot guarantee when we will receive Aldott's approval. And while I am deeply appreciative of Aldott's willingness in a fast-growing community with a lot of demands on our infrastructure and time, we also run into a timing issue where we need to get projects delivered, and sometimes we can't wait. It's really hard to make a recommendation to the council to walk away from half a million dollars, but that's where the staff stands today, which is if, from a timing perspective, you would like this project delivered sooner, then we need to move forward and award it. If you're willing to wait it out, then we'll wait it out.
But I would ask that the council move forward with it tonight. The folks out there on Wire Road have suffered enough. We could have realigned that intersection, put a red light up way back two years ago and be through with that. But we did the roundabout because of the Aldott grant and that kind of thing. So I say we move forward with it and try to find out what went wrong with Aldott this time, maybe correct it for future projects.
So that would be at your pleasure. I will leave it on the agenda, and it'll be up to the council. It's on the consent agenda. I want to remind you how you want to act from there, but I don't want you to think what's in your packets includes any more of the $450,000.
Any other questions for Megan on this specific topic?
So if we approve it tonight, and you say you got the sort of finagle money around, so what is it going to take away from? Do y'all have any idea of?
We've got a number of projects in our capital stack that, you know, they're in the budget, they're not bid for various reasons or what have you. We'll make an official adjustment at mid-biennium, which we were planning to do anyway before Aldott came back to us a second time with the grant. So it's not going to take away from a project that is currently in effect. If things, you know, in future years, yes, it's half a million dollars less we have in the budget to do other things overall, but I can't give you specific projects. I can tell you I'm comfortable in having a talk with the finance director that we can absorb this, and it's not going to impact other projects we said we'd be working on that are currently approved in the budget. We'll just adjust out at mid-biennium for it and move on.
I recently had one, a young man killed out there in the intersection, so I don't think you can put a value on human life. Hearing that it could possibly be finished by November is just very good news, and I definitely think it'd probably save somebody else's life from that intersection. It's horrible, especially during times of soccer games. So that means a lot of kids and parents are coming through that intersection, and I'd hate to think what could happen if one of them got run over.
Well, there's no question, Tommy, that there was a sense of urgency for us to move this forward when we made that decision, and that was the latest tragedy out there, but there've been other tragedies at that intersection.
The regular meeting when we can pull it off the agenda and ask?
That'd be fine, sure. Okay, good idea. All right. Anything else for the City Manager? If not, do we have a move to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
A move.
Second. We are adjourned. It is 7:05, so we'll go ahead, and I'll open the regular meeting of Auburn City Council for June the 15th, 2021. Roll call, Lindsey.
Dawson.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Toby.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Mitten.
Here.
Andrews.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
Please be seated. Earlier in the Committee of the Whole, we just completed a discussion about the changes in the roundabout that'll be coming up potentially on our agenda tonight. That is 8E5, and we'll be talking about that a little bit later. And then also, Ms. Witten had some questions and some comments on item 9E. As far as Mayor's comments this evening, there's a number of things I'd like to mention. I want to thank the project this past Friday night. What a beautiful evening in downtown arts and humanities, the downtown merchants, and then, I think, from the city's perspective, our Parks and Rec staff, our public safety staff, and environmental services. But it was a wonderful, wonderful evening. A lot of people were having a great time downtown, and I just appreciate everybody's hard work to make that happen. There was a lot of smiling faces downtown. And what was exciting on Saturday morning is I went to the city market, which was fantastic, and I encourage those who've not been to the city market to take a little time. Usually, my wife goes, and she had to work, and she asked me to go, so I wandered out there as a novice at city markets, but had a great time. It was a great atmosphere. But as I drove through downtown Auburn, downtown Auburn was very clean, and you would have never known there'd been thousands of people there the night before. So kudos to our environmental services staff. They had the place looking great.
Mayor, and the public works staff.
Public work staff, okay. Thank you. I knew I'd be corrected when I needed to be, so thank you for doing that. So kudos to the public work staff. Thank y'all for your hard work. Recently, you might have seen a story about a former police officer, Mike Roberson, who has suffered some health setbacks. There was an event for him at his home this past Friday, and the Chattahoochee chapter of the Fuller Center is raising money currently for him right now to do an addition to his house, which would provide a shower that would allow him to get in, in a handicap, in a wheelchair, and another bedroom that's downstairs for he and his wife. I would encourage you that if you feel led to look into that and make a contribution to my Mississippi State baseball team, Rowdy Jordan, and he's the leadoff batter and plays centerfield for the Bulldogs and led them to the College World Series. So congratulations to Rowdy, and we look forward to watching him this week in Omaha. Since our last meeting, we had the ribbon cutting for the Auburn Medical Pavilion, which is the new hospital in the Research Park, and that was a very exciting day, as you saw the partnership with EAMC and Auburn University and the Research Park and the city, and a group of doctors that are putting a great health facility here in Auburn. That's going to be such a great asset to our community, to our student body, and to campus, and that was an exciting day. And I look forward to watching what the Auburn Medical Pavilion is for our community today and what it'll become in the future. Representative Mike Rogers was here recently, and we got to visit the city of Auburn, and about the opening of the Boykin Food Pantry, which is a partnership of the city of Auburn and Auburn Community Development Corporation. It'll be open a couple of days a week at the Boykin Community Center, and we look forward to that new opportunity for the residents over there to be able to utilize the great resources from the food pantry. Al, congratulations to you and your staff for making that happen. A couple of ladies I've gotten to know a couple of years ago, Ashley Brown and Olivia Nichols, saw the completion of their project come to fruition this past weekend with the Lee County Remembrance Project with a memorial that was, I guess, dedicated on Saturday afternoon in front of the courthouse in Opelika. And these young ladies have been working on this for many, many years. This is where they honor the memories of people that were in Lee County who were lynched in our past. And I just appreciate their efforts and their desire to bring honor to these people's lives. And I know, Bob, you went over there the other day and participated in that. I didn't know if you'd want to say something about your experience over there.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it was a deeply moving ceremony. The women involved, Ashley Brown and Olivia Nichols, led an organization called the Lee County Remembrance Project, and together with the Equal Justice Initiative out of Montgomery and the local NAACP chapter, they conducted a wonderful, sensitive ceremony honoring the lives of these four local Lee County men, George Hart, John Moss, Charles Humphreys, and Samuel Harris, who perished as victims of racial terror lynchings in this county. There is now a marker that you can view at the courthouse square. There's also, if you get the opportunity, go to the East Alabama Museum, the Museum of East Alabama, I should say, and there is also a nice informative display further explaining the history of this sad moment in Lee County. And it was incredibly, I felt very, very honored to be a part and to witness this.
Thank you, Bob. In two weeks, I'll be going to Mobile, and it'd be a great meeting with the 10 largest cities in the state. And then don't forget, on July the 4th, fireworks will be again out at Duck Sanford Stadium. And I appreciate last year, the city really working hard to provide that for our citizens during a difficult time, and this year, we look forward to having a normal and great time. And this Saturday will be a first-time-ever event in Auburn, and I'm going to ask Ms. Taylor if she'd like to speak to Juneteenth.
Yes, the community, well, the public is invited to come out to Juneteenth on Saturday, July the 19th, at Sam Harris Park, and it's going to start at 10:00. We will have a speaker, and he would speak around 2:00. There will be different activities going on, games, and singing, music. So it's a day of fun, so we ask that everyone come out and enjoy all the festivities for that event. It will end around 6:00 PM. I was listening at the weather this morning, so I heard that it was a 50% chance of rain. So let's pray and hope the rain don't come in.
Thank you for your hard work. And Beth, I appreciate your assisting on that as well. I know, kind of, you've got a committee put together, so thank you for doing that. And we encourage-
Yes, and I also want to thank Beth and the members of the Chamber of Commerce for stepping up to the plate and helping out, and we really, really appreciate that. I see somebody smiling in the back. But we really, really appreciate all the help and effort that everybody's putting into this celebration.
Anyone else on the council have an announcement, anything they'd like to say?
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say I thank God tonight. I can look back there and see Sergeant Webb Sistrunk. He was one of the lucky luckers, and probably shouldn't be here without a hand to God being upon him. And it's good to see you, Webb, and thank you for the job you do. And I don't want to leave out Brett Howell back there. Officer Howell is one of those guys, been with us a long time, and he's one of those guys, if you can't get along with him, you can't get along with anybody. He keeps things rolling, and I appreciate the way you treat our citizens and what you do for us, Brett. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Anyone else on the council have anything? Okay, we'll move ahead to Auburn University Communications.
Hi, everyone. Thank y'all for having me again. So recently, the Auburn president, Dr. Jay Gooch, announced his retirement at the Board until the search committee finds a new one in the coming weeks. Recently, Auburn put the finishing touches on the new $26 million dining facility right in the center of campus. I got a tour of it the other day. It's beautiful, and it's all in a big part thanks to the Auburn College of Agriculture, thanks to high-tech shipping containers. They have all these virtual gardens, and it's really pushing Auburn toward that view of sustainability that we're really, really pushing for. So we're really excited about that. I know all the incoming freshmen are very excited about that, right next to the quad, so very, very good. Speaking of freshmen, Camp War Eagle is approaching its end next week, biggest freshman class we've had. It's brought in a lot of people to Auburn, a lot of parents, a lot of revenue downtown. So sad that's over, but really excited for the class of 2025. I also wanted to mention this Saturday, in commemoration of Juneteenth, Auburn Athletics is going to be hosting a Unity Walk, so they're starting at the Auburn Athletic Complex parking lot, finishing at the Melton Student Center in that green space. So that'll be from 1:00 to 3:00. So that'll be a great event. And then last night, we had our Cabinet and Senate meetings for student government, and the committee members, students on the committee members for Auburn 2040 met after, and they're really looking forward to meeting with Mary Anders on Friday at City Breakfast and really furthering Auburn 2040 and getting in SGA with that. So thank y'all so much for having me. That's about all I have.
Thank you.
War Eagle.
My wife and I went out for some dessert last night, went to a local restaurant, and it was full of parents and young people coming to Camp War Eagle. It's great to see on a Monday evening to have a full restaurant. Okay, this time we'll have Citizens Communications for Items on the Agenda. This is only items on the agenda. If you'd like to talk to us about something that's not on the agenda, you would need to wait until later on in our Minutes. Items on our Agenda. Now, there are a number of things on our agenda that have public hearings attached, and that would be the more appropriate time for you Anyone? Okay, we'll move ahead. City Manager's Communications.
Mayor, under City Manager's Communications this evening, we have the announcement of two vacancies on the Green Space Advisory Board and one vacancy on the Water Works Board. Appointments will be made at the July 20th, 2021 meeting. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Obviously, 8E5.
Any other item?
8E1, please.
Anything else? All right, we'll take these.
Take them in order.
Yeah, please.
Item 81 authorizes a contract with Barge Design Solutions for Design Services for the Wire Road Soccer Complex Roundabout in the amount of $179,700.
Move for approval. All right, we have a motion. Then a second discussion. Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, this is the first I've, you know, been made aware of this, and I think it's an interesting project, and I'd just like some more details, just if we, what it's going to entail, possibly a timeline.
Absolutely. I'll give you one brief overview, and then I'm going to have City Engineer Fraser build in more details. This is a very new project to me as well, and what I mean is, we've talked for a while about we have in our capital improvement plan, we're going to be doing a major expansion at the soccer complex, adding three additional outdoor fields and large indoor facility and a lot of parking. We also have a lot of concerns from our citizens that use the complex and visitors about their ability of ingress and egress through that area and a lot of concerns. We did look, and I asked City Engineer Fraser to evaluate a traffic signal that would operate only when the complex was in full operations, and she evaluated that and very kindly told me it's a really great idea, Megan, except for it doesn't warrant a traffic signal, and therefore, we cannot place one even if it goes into flash mode. So she and her team looked at other options, and Allison, take it from here as to where the roundabout came from.
Yeah, after the signal didn't warrant, one of the things we did look at to improve the efficiency of the intersection was a roundabout. And so we reworked the design solutions. They also did the design for the roundabout at Cox and Wire. This should allow the exiting traffic from the soccer complex to do so fairly efficiently, to stop and cause the backup that we've been experiencing. But this is just an alternate solution to a traffic signal that does not warrant.
Allison, one additional thing, because I had this question for you, for travelers on Wire Road, because the soccer complex is not in operation, you know, weekdays, except for in the summer, it is weeknights and weekends. What does that mean for travelers on Wire Road?
The way we've laid it out with the consultant, traffic along Wire will pretty much mimic what it's doing now, almost be straight, with the exception of a slight curvature. But Wire Road should not experience any issues because of this. And I think, Megan, you didn't mention the timeline. We are trying to get this designed so that we can include it in the project for the soccer complex and make it one project.
Great.
And then I also think there had been a question about, I had received one question from Councilperson Griswold about, you have a drawing in your packets that shows that it may extend on to an adjoining property owner's property. Though we have not approached any adjoining property owners yet, because until the design is complete, we don't know how much right-of-way. The right-of-way is actually kind of strange right there. It's oddly what the soccer complex side, so there's a bigger gap. So we don't know if it's temporary construction easements, rights-of-way, or what, but we will approach that property owner once we have enough information to do so. It is not our intent to spring design on people, but this is a relatively new thing that we are trying to accomplish in time for the bid, and that's why the hurry up.
I have a question, and it would be the same question for E5. Do we have control of Wire Road from a maintenance and?
Yes, we control Wire Road from Webster Road out to the city limits.
Okay.
Or to about Chad Oak Lane, actually.
Okay.
So as in, we do not need another agency's permission to accomplish that roundabout?
Correct.
And we have not applied for a grant for this, and probably will not be.
So how close is this one, this soccer one, to number five?
The Cox and Wire intersection, Allison?
Maybe a mile?
Yeah, it's a reasonable distance. You're not going to hit two, you know, you're going to see them back-to-back, but it's not on top of each other. And this will actually help tremendously if people who use the complex will talk about Cox and Wire getting way backed up, as well as ingress, egress to the soccer complex. And to note, and we're also putting that as a third way to get to the interstate from that area and so on, and there's a good bit of traffic into Macon County from there as well, so.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we've got a motion and a second all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, Mayor. Item 85 authorizes the execution of a contract with JLD Enterprises for the installation of a roundabout at the intersection of Wire Road and Cox Road in the amount of $1,874,570.25.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll start our discussion. Tommy, you asked for this to be pulled. I'll give you the floor if you'd like it.
Just the same thing I expressed earlier. I think this is really needed, and I know it's a lot of money for us to have to spend, but we've been working on it for a long time, and it's something that needs doing, and I think it'll save lives in the long run. So I would just plead with the council to support it, and let's get it working out there.
Any other comments or questions from the?
Same question. At this stage of Wire Road, are we, do we have complete control of Wire Road and Cox Road?
Yes.
How was Aldott involved if they don't control that?
So the grant that we were receiving from Aldott was a safety grant under the highway and this particular project, the roundabout, was actually a safety improvement project, so it was eligible to receive those funds.
Is there an opportunity, even if we pass this, that they could come back and have a change of heart and agree to the $450,000? I'll agree.
Not based on my conversations this afternoon.
I do want to assure the council that- I do want to assure the council that, being that I found out about this at 4:00 today, we're still planning to pursue that. The challenge is, the information the city engineer was given, if we award this, it's gone. You know, we'll see if that holds. I'll have a talk with the mayor about it. We'll make some phone calls. I'm not willing to walk away from a half a million dollars that easily. We have a timing issue here, and I want to give you the absolute decision point on this. Staff is recommending we proceed based on your sentiments prior that you want this project delivered. But we will also absolutely wait if you would prefer that we pursue this a little bit further. The concern that we have is, what we were told today, if you award this, the money is gone. Otherwise, you need to wait until we award it to you, approve it, then you can go out to bid, and then you can award it. And what we're concerned about is, how many day lag is that? Is that 90 days, 120 days, 150 days? We don't know. And I, we can't give you a good, good gauge on that. So that's why I want to put this in your hands. We're, we are happy to go either way, but our recommendation is, you want this delivered, then we should proceed this evening.
Well, and I agree with, with Councilperson Dawson, that we've already signaled to the community that we're willing to move forward, and we've wanted to expedite this because of the delays that we were experiencing with the outside agency. So I would be in agreement to move forward.
I'll also note that there are other funding things that would be coming down to the city, and this may be an eligible expense to reimburse ourselves for, and we'll also take a hard look at that. As long as it's not debt that we've already issued, and we're not issuing debt, this is a cash project. So we think there are other ways to repay ourselves for this. And it's a conversation that began at 4:00 today, but we're, we're pretty comfortable, and Allison's nodding at me, so there you go.
Any other questions from the council? Comments?
I like the notion of not being held hostage by anyone, like perhaps another roundabout on the north side of town.
Agreed.
Say, let's move forward.
Yeah, I drove through Sunday evening, and it's, it's late June in my mind, and yeah, it has a ways to go, so yes.
Right, and 280 and 147 was a deadline of April, and it's June.
Correct. One side of 280 has been paved, but yeah, no traffic signal yet. Understood.
Exactly.
Anybody else? To approve the and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda carries.
All right, council, under ordinances this evening, item 9A is a request from Clayton Properties Group, Incorporated, for the disposition and sale of .098 acres of right of way along Miracle Road that is no longer needed. The purchase price of the property is $9,700. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, is there any discussion from the council? Questions? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9B is a request from Alabama Power Company to declare 1.856 acres at 1499 Sugardurn Parkway as surplus property and to authorize the execution of a purchase and sell agreement in the amount of $400,000. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, is there any discussion, questions, comments from the council? All right, hearing none, Lindsey, roll call.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, is there any discussion? Any questions? Okay, Lindsey, roll call.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9C2 is a request from Quell Chase Group, LLC, to annex approximately 271 acres located on Lee Road 81, also known as Mrs. James Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its June 10, 2021, meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, is there any questions?
This is an annexation. We don't know exactly what the intent is for this property, correct?
I'll have our acting planning director speak to that. It was stated at Planning Commission.
Sure, this is, they have also submitted for preliminary plat approval at the Planning Commission meeting last week for a 51-lot subdivision.
But Katie, it's large lots, correct?
It is, yes.
This is a rural designation and they're not
Minimum of three acres.
And they're not seeking a rezoning at this time?
They are not. It will stay rural.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9D is a request from Tom Haley on behalf of Links Crossing LLC to rezon approximately 8.06 acres from rural to development district housing for Links Crossing Phase 4, which is located in the 3300 block of Mill Creek Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its May 13, 2021, meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing none, this will be a long version. Lindsey with the roll call.
Parsons?
Yes.
Excuse me, public hearing is required.
He's doing a roll call
Doing a roll call.
Before the public hearing, before the public hearing. Only when we do the, yeah.
Am I correct on that?
You're both right. You're correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address city council, please give your name and address for the record. We'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions from the council? Do I have a move to approve?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Lindsey, the vote.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
All right, another long version. Item 9E includes amendments to Article 2, Section 203, definitions in Article 5, Detailed Use Regulations, Section 511.04, Home Occupations of the City of Auburn zoning ordinance. These amendments pertain to short-term rentals and will provide a definition for lodging, transient occupancy, as well as clarifications on some provisions that apply only to home stays. A unanimous consent is necessary, a public hearing is required. And let the record reflect that Councilperson Dixon has recused and left the dais.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
I'm going to deny unanimous consent.
All right, let the record reflect that unanimous consent has been denied, and this item will be its second reading at the July 6, 2021, city council meeting. Can somebody get Councilperson Dixon?
What'd you say, the 10th meeting?
Huh?
What date?
July, July 6. The first city council meeting.
Hey, Mayor, that was our last ordinance. On behalf of Swan Investments, LLC, for conditional use approval of a performance residential development, also known as a multi-unit development, for property located at 687 North Dean Road in the Comprehensive Development District, zoning district. At the May 13, 2021, meeting, Planning Commission made a motion to recommend approval of this conditional use request, but that motion failed by a vote of zero to seven. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm David Slocum. I am the civil engineer for the development, also the applicant representing the developer who is also here tonight. And I just wanted to, I'm going to be very brief, just wanted to clarify some confusion that occurred during the last hearing at the Planning Commission meeting. We're not, we're not requesting any rezoning. This property is on CDD. Townhomes are allowed by right in CDD zoning. What we're essentially trying to decide here tonight is the method of how the end result will, will be obtained. condominium-style plat. That means we can utilize existing infrastructure that's already in place. There's already a private drive from Dean Road back to the site where the townhomes would be built. That driveway is, of course, in place. It is funded with, it is maintained with private money and would continue to be so. On the other hand, denial of the conditional use request means the developer would have to install a city street on a city right of way from Dean Road back to the site so that those townhomes could be sold as fee simple lots, which means the city would be taking on the responsibility of maintaining roughly 1,000 feet of new city street and all the infrastructure that goes along with it. So I just wanted to make sure that that one is clear on exactly what the request is and the result of that request. Driving down Dean Road, looking at it, will not know the difference of how, if it's a condominium or a townhome. It's, the buildings will be exactly the same. It's just a matter of whether or not the city wants that maintenance of a city street on city right of way versus utilizing what's already in place. I'll be glad to answer any questions or maybe come back after the public hearing if anybody.
Anybody have a question for Mr. Slocum at this time? Okay, we'll let you know. Thank you.
I do have a question. Where would the alternative road run? If it doesn't run, you were talking about alternative access.
There's a number of, of solutions. It's fortunately a very large lot with a lot of road frontage. So we've already looked at site distance and looked at several different scenarios. It could be right in the center of the property and rearrange some of the existing parking lots. There's, there's several options for it.
Sir, so you're, you're going to build a residential facility one way or another? Is that what I'm, what you're saying?
Yes, sir. The developer really believes in the site. He really, he really has a vision for it and believes it's a good location for what he's wanting to do. And since it's allowed by right, it's just a matter of how we will get to that point.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Ann Bibris, and I have a question about the Indo Pool. When they closed
This is not the time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. This is a public hearing for this item that we have on the agenda tonight. Yes, ma'am. Who would be next?
Hello, I'm Jim Phillips. My office is at 761 North Dean Road. I have, I was the first dentist to build along that stretch of road in Central Park. I pleasantly pleased with the development of, of the Central Park neighborhood as a professional. Part the, the medical dental in nature, there are a few others, veterinary clinic, some other things. But the development has been very consistent with the neighborhood. Adding 25 condominiums directly behind my office across from the pool would be significantly out of character with the neighborhood. It's, it's, it's a business park. It's a, it's a medical dental, professional business park. There's lawyers, there's, there's, there's some other professionals in the park, a sleep clinic. But it's a professional medical park, medical dental park. And it's, the character has been maintained for 20, I've been there 20 years, and the character of Central Park neighborhood has been maintained. And it's, it's, this development is very much so out of character. And I do think as a city the character of a neighborhood when we make decisions like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for Dr. Phillips.
Yeah, sure. Jim, you might have answered a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding that the Central Park development is under a Property Owners Association?
Yes.
And do y'all each have a vote in how that association or the property is, or the development of it?
That's a good question, because we've never voted on anything. And I have sent emails to the, to the folks that run the, the Property Owners Association, and I have, I've not been able to get a response. So I had that question as to why they weren't up here fighting this, because the vast majority, if, if you took vote in the, in the neighborhood, I don't know a single person that would vote for this.
Do you have one developer who has controlling interest over the Property Owners Association?
That question I don't know, but I do know the Connor Brothers and Fred Bennett were, were involved at the onset of it. And I don't know right now what the status of that is. I know we pay $333 a year for the dues to the Owners Association, and I'm, I don't know the answer to that question.
Because I think what we're faced with is, this is permitted by right, except for they're asking for a private access versus a public access.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I would suggest that if there's enough of the property owners that have an issue with this, that you find the person who gave their blessing to the Property Owners Association.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Scott Sprayberry. I'm on 773 North Dean Road. I'm an orthodontist. I've been here since 1999. And Beth, thanks for that bit of information. I'm going to have to change what I'm saying, because everything I've heard leading up to this meeting was I was going to have an opportunity to try to persuade you to not approve this. It was my understanding that the city could, did have rights within zoning of what goes in, different locations. I do want to point out to the city council and mayor that I can remember moving here, and it was rare that people in Auburn were able to go to the doctor or specialists, and certainly dental specialists, without leaving town. And you think, well, that's impossible, but I'm pretty sure the Endodontist on North Dean Road is the first endodontist in Auburn. The periodontist next door to me, I'm pretty sure through zoning, when I bought the practice, certainly, one of the reasons I bought the land is because I felt like if I did this, I was secure in building a nice specialty building. You know, when you build a specialty dental practice, you, you build a very specific building. My, my practice, my building's an orthodontic office. I can't really convert it to anything. And so I've, just two years ago, invested to redo that, entire exterior and interior. You know, I want to give my patients a great experience. And so I think everybody around this pond that would be looking into those townhouses would, would agree that we did this with the understanding that we're investing this time and money so that we have a property we don't have to worry about something like this going in. Because if any of you have, I don't know if you have diagrams, but the pond that separates the back of our buildings from this proposed development is not a big, it's not a lake, it's not a big pond. It's just a body of water that I could, you know, ask somebody on there catching fish, and they could hear me. And, you know, this thing gets built, am I going to have the residents coming around the pond fishing? I've got six patient chairs overlooked. And it just, to have a residential area put in there And it just, to have a residential area put in there does not fit the character of the area at all. I just, a friend of mine, Dr. TJ Fuquay, couldn't be here, he's coaching his son out of town in baseball tonight, but I wanted to use him in closing as an example. Dr. Fuquay went to Auburn, and he became an oral surgeon through his training and education at Auburn and at UAB. So he spent 10 years at UAB after graduating from Auburn. He has a medical degree, has a dental degree, and so does his partner, Dr. Ken Zuhari, who's here. And I just want to stress to the council and the mayor what a benefit it is to the community, for the welfare of the community, to have people like that. You know, we just came out of COVID, and if we had had our old system, where we had a group of oral surgeons coming through from Montgomery, I just wouldn't have access like I do calling Dr. Fuquay or Dr. Zuhari. You know, during COVID, we're trying to figure out how to practice. Well, they're two doors down, they're my friends and neighbors. So it seems like you would be charged for protecting the welfare of the community, doing what's best for situations like this for the long term. Because certainly, we'd want to encourage specialists, dentists, doctors to keep coming to Auburn. And if this somehow or another is built, it will be, of course, disappointing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sprayberry. Who would be next?
My name is Alan Tames. I'm an orthodontist next to five years, and I want to echo what my colleagues have expressed as well. You know, when I bought that property, I bought the property, I think, seven years ago. A lot of it, you look at the zoning in the area and what can be built and what can't be built. You know, when you're making that investment in your practice and what's going to be around, do you want to be in a medical or a business park? You know, you would like to have other businesses. It don't have to be, it doesn't have to be all medical or dental, but it needs to be businesses that, you know, are appropriate for where you'd like to practice, where you'd like your patients coming. And you just didn't ever imagine having apartments, you know, built alongside of you. So, you know, that was, you know, just understanding, I thought, hey, we've got zoning, and there's never going to be apartments next to me because we're in this business area. Initially, you know, I was going to ask y'all, appeal to y'all to say, hey, let's uphold the planning commission's decision about a few weeks ago. And, you know, I don't know, there seems like there was a technicality at the time of last meeting. The planning commission voted unanimously, seven to zero, to what we thought at the time was to deny this, these apartments from going in. So I don't know if there's some type of, you know, it seems like common sense to me where, hey, we're, nobody really wants these apartments going in, none of the neighbors want that. We don't feel like it's in the best, you know, it's not best for our city, but it's some kind of type of technicality, say, well, our hands are tied, we can't do anything, we've just got to let this go through. It seems like there would be another solution if we all put our heads together here and figure out, you know, what the best way to move forward than just say, well, you know, this is off my, I don't have to make this decision here. Another thing I just want to point out, too, is right now, that property at Craftmasters is eight and a half, 8.67 acres large. And right now, they're asking for 25 units to put, you put in the back of that. And my concern is that if that gets put through, they're going to put that in, and then what's to keep in a few years from now, them to say, hey, Craftmasters is not, we'll just take that down, and then we'll just make that whole 8.67 acres, all the townhomes and all apartments, and make that whole area just a community of townhomes. And they would use the justification for that as, hey, we've already got these 25, you know, townhomes here. We've already got this, either the city street or whatever street that accesses this, let's just take all the Craftmasters down and just convert that all to townhomes. So I just, that's my concern, is that, you know, 10 years from now, we look, we look up and there's, you know, a huge apartment complex right there, what we used to have a nice, you know, medical dental facility, business, you know, community there. So just want to appeal to everybody that's trying to figure out what's best for our
I'm Ken Zuhari. I'm at 747 North Dean Road, right between Dr. Tames and Dr. Phillips, who spoke already, and two doors down from Dr. Sprayberry. Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'm here today on behalf of my partner, Dr. Fuquay, my associates, and my patients. And for myself, I would like to express our opposition to this proposal. We've been there for 10 years now, at 747. When we built that office, we looked at multiple sites up and down North Dean. We knew that was where we wanted to be, because when you look at that road, it is medical office, dental office, pharmacy, dental office, dental specialist, medical office, dental office, dental specialist, dental specialist, dental specialist, dental office, dental office. And then when you cross the road, it's a mirror image. We looked at multiple sites, and we looked at the surrounding areas of those sites. And what we were looking for is privacy. We're concerned about the health, the safety, the privacy and the welfare of the Central Park business community. We're concerned about our patients, we're concerned about our customers. Maintaining the welfare of our office park includes preserving the beauty and the natural aesthetic of the area, which is unique to the city of Auburn, to have a pond with business offices around it. This pond is beautiful, it's unique, and we want to try to maintain Central Park as a thriving professional development area. The potential negative impacts of, on existing and adjacent properties are many and include, but are not limited to the privacy as well as ease of access for our patient property will negatively impact the already congested traffic on North Dean. Not to mention the logistical challenges of having a residential entrance shared with a business driveway and a loading dock. I don't know about the rules of planning and zoning, but if I can go and buy a piece of property, subdivide it, and then compel the city to build a road for me to do whatever I want to with that property, I may be in the wrong business. And there may be some opportunities out there for me to do some other things in development. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to represent our opposition to this proposal.
Thank you. Who would be next?
Good evening. My name's Tony Hyatt. I'm the developer for this application and proposed use for conditional use. I'm here to try and reinforce a few things and clear up some of the things we just heard. Like they've all said, this has been a nice development. It only has a few parcels left, and it would be a good quality development throughout with mixed use. But what I mean by that is, there's over 65 businesses in Central Park, with medical being the minority, not the minority, but less than 50%. There's a lot of other businesses, retail, daycare centers, and when they picked this site out, I don't know how they missed the hugest, the largest building in the facility in the development, is Craftmaster. Craftmaster was the pioneer. They were the first purchase. They purchased property first, they're the biggest building, they got the largest acreage, and they've been there 25 years. Some has been there seven, some has been there 20, but Craftmaster's been there over 25 years. And we're not asking to do anything that's not allowed within the zoning. We just need a conditional use to not go in there and disturb any of, that's already there, and redevelop it, and may have more impact on surrounding property owners than leaving it alone as if... The city would not want to maintain this road for eternity when they're not going to benefit no more than allowing us to utilize what's there. We will keep the maintenance up as a private owner, and you will receive the tax revenue forever. You won't have the exposed liability. There's just more benefits than making us reconstruct the whole Dean Road. They may be back up here complaining about more problems after that, not knowing what we may have to do. There are six pages of approved uses for this particular zoning on that property, and most all of them are not business, professional, or dental. There's many, many, many uses. And this just happens to be one that requires your support to allow us to use that access that six pages of permitted uses would not need your approval. We're not looking to do anything but continue to try to make Auburn one of the best places to live in America. We're not trying to do nothing except improve everyone's property. This is going to be a quality development, and we're going to move forward with it.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the council?
Mayor, real quick, I am a tenant in the Craftmasters Building. I don't own land there, but my law firm is there, so I'm going to imagine ethics are going to require me to abstain from any voting, as this would affect my tenancy, could potentially affect my business. I'll be abstaining from any voting or any deliberation.
I do have a few questions.
Sure.
Is this lot, because we keep talking about eight point, however many acres, commission and deny this conditional use approval. In order to build townhomes that are permitted by right, what would be the steps that would be required of the applicant?
Sure. They would need to do a preliminary platte and add a public street. The townhomes would need to have road frontage.
And let me clarify with that, and I need the council to be clear, because you dealt with this on another project. The city does not have an interest in maintaining and owning a road that goes to nowhere for a small development through another project. And so it is not necessarily, we are not necessarily compelled to accept a right-of-way. And this is not one the staff has had the opportunity to evaluate. We have no plans with a public right-of-way on it, none. There was a case on Twin Forks where you dealt with this previously, and Twin Forks, that development abutted Twin Forks and could have branched off of that and subdivided differently. But I want to be clear, is we've not evaluated this. The use before you has nothing to do with dedicating a public right-of-way at this time. We've not evaluated setbacks, can still be conforming, can we meet impervious surface ratio? I believe the way to enter the maintenance of if we don't need to, and this is deep into the back of a lot. So until we've had a chance to evaluate that, we also try very hard for you to deal with a project that is before you, not what might come before you or might be submitted to staff at a later date that could be permitted by right if it meets all of our criteria. That's a ways off.
Is this, is there density based off of the eight point X acres for this?
It would be, yes. Before it is subdivided, sure. So the maximum density for that whole eight acres is 82 units, but that's utilizing the entire eight acres.
So if it were to be subdivided, let's say, are they within the density requirements of what that actual acreage is?
They would be, sure. They would be within that density, but as the city manager stated, we would, we have no idea how that, how big the lot would be now that they're contemplating putting in a new right-of-way.
Right, and I am not saying that information this evening for you.
So Megan, can you clarify for the council exactly what decision we're being asked to make tonight?
You're asking to make a conditional use approval for what we call a multi-unit development, which is a performance residential development and a comprehensive development district. And that multi-unit development, we refer to as condominiums. Multi-unit development can be apartments, townhouses, what have you. The architectural style of this is very much townhouse. But a townhouse defined in the City of Auburn zoning ordinance is one on a fee simple lot, which means it's on a public street and has been subdivided, and you own the land under your unit fee simple as opposed to a condominium-style. And I know that's more of a real estate language than you want to know, but it's a distinguishing factor in our ordinance. And there are times that staff has not recommended approval of, or acceptance of, a public right-of-way. And again, not saying we would or we wouldn't, but without an evaluation, we do not know. And so this allows access to this property directly through the Craftmaster property. You would call it a cross-access easement, and those aren't abnormal in commercial developments that are factoring as we would have considered it in the zoning ordinance at the time. And that project is also there because that is the reason that Central Park got built. We got an industrial access grant from the state of Alabama because Craftmaster qualified as an industry, and that helped build the first section of the road. The development group, then, the city actually built the whole road, and the development group paid the city back for what was not grant-funded, minus the center turn lane. We actually paid for the third lane all the way down that road. But the city borrowed the money, paid for the road to be extended, because we needed Opelika Road and East University Drive to connect. We paid for that, and then they paid us back minus the industrial access grant. And that's how that got built. And so it does allow a variety of uses, there is no question. But I can tell you, as a percentage of our land... We don't have a lot of land use in Auburn slated for office park, because of, you like to group them together, but certainly, and acknowledge, there is residential abutting this area, there is residential on edges of this, there is an assisted living facility, there's other parts of Central Park development that include housing, so there is no question that housing exists there and a mix of uses, as you heard, exist. But the land use plan deemed this office park because of that limited nature.
Just a couple more comments, if I may.
Please.
An additional concern I have, and I did speak with the applicant, is the density of this proposal. And I would be more inclined to be concerned for the residents that would desire to live there with the light industrial use of a printing company right in their, literally in their backyard. Additionally, I would also, this is the second time in my tenure that we've seen the property owners not in favor of residential in Central Park. And I asked the questions before with Twin Forks, if the property owners had a vote, and the question then was, or the answer was the same as today, we don't really know. So I would, I think this could have been headed off at the pass if there was a more collective property owners of Central Park. And I would encourage those property owners to maybe organize better within your Property Owners Association, so that in the future, if things come before us, you'll have a better understanding of what can and can't be built within your own covenants. But I am concerned about the residents that could potentially live there, and I'm concerned about the fact that this is a use that is not part of the land use for that actual section of, this section of North Dean Road. And for those reasons, I won't be supporting this conditional use approval.
Megan, can we get, can we get kind of a flavor of what the planning commission's thoughts were, maybe some of the comments or thoughts?
Absolutely. I'll have Acting Planning Director Katie Robinson explain that. I also think in your packet, you talked about staff recommended denial based on the land use, but also to what Councilperson Witten said, the recommendation of a denial also had to do with incompatibility with the adjacent use specifically, that currently, as it sits today, Craftmaster is a publishing plant. Katie?
Sure. I cannot recall completely what the comments were, but as a whole, everyone agreed that this proposed use was not in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. And being so close to Craftmasters, there was a potential for nuisances such as light and traffic from the semi-trucks that frequent there, so.
Thank you, Katie. Okay. Beth and I have asked all the questions. Anybody else like to ask any questions, have any comments? Sure.
Yes, please. Just to be clear, if, or being asked to do is basically the difference between condominiums and townhomes. Is that kind of the simplistic way of looking at it, what the end product is?
The end product may look the same outside to the average person. It does, the difference is, the notion of a public street is not solved. If it's a townhome, it has to be a public right-of-way, or it cannot be a townhome as defined by our ordinance. And what we can't tell you is whether or not staff would even recommend approval of a right-of-way in this location, and there's a lot of analysis that has to be done. And that is the main difference, is you wouldn't see, you wouldn't see anything about a townhome until a right-of-way dedication came before you. Condominiums are conditional.
So the developer has stated they're going to build something that looks one in the same. So the developer has stated they're gonna build something that looks one in the same, no matter what we vote tonight?
I don't know that they're gonna build it because I don't know, and I, what I mean from a regulatory standpoint, without another plan submitted that meets all of our criteria, I can't tell you that they can build townhomes today. We don't have that information.
Okay, but it is permitted by right?
Absolutely, it is. You are correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
But even, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jay. Even though it is permitted by right, the, the townhomes, they have to front a public right of way?
Correct, there's gonna have to be a public right of way and that is
And they've got certain requirements.
Correct.
To get their public still have the hurdle of the public right of way.
Yeah, it's not, this, this is not being proposed on the Dean Road side of the Craftmaster plant that abuts an existing right of way. A new one would have to be, you know, completely designed, built and what have you, and the city engineer would have to recommend that it be a public right of way and we are not, we are not there. Because that's not the proposal that staff has at this time. And absolutely, the applicant has indicated that they're working on it, but we're, we're just not there.
Tommy?
Jay and I are thinking alike tonight.
My question.
All right.
I do think that the Central Park medical area, you know, is a gem. I did grow up here and had a handful of doctors and dentists around. I've had the distinct pleasure of being in Dr. Fuquay's chair, looking out at the, at the pond. I, I do, I'm gonna defer use and, and general continuity of the neighborhood to not vote in favor. You know, I do think that there are hurdles to be, to be had, and I think Beth has made it very clear, and rightfully so, that the neighborhood really, you know, should be protecting you, you know, in this, in this use or, or continuity issue. But, you know, that's just kind of where we are. My two cents.
Okay, anyone else?
I would say that I have a different opinion on this. I am supportive of it, I may be the only one that is supportive of this tonight, but there, if you think over the past year or so, businesses are not gonna be the way they used to be, I think. And I, and I think that we have also seen a shortage of homes in this area in Auburn, and that is why I'm supportive of this. I think that as we move forward in the, in the years, you'll see more people working from home and that kind of thing. And I, that's just kind of what I see. I know there's, you know, the dentist and medical offices are always gonna be here, but I, I do think that this is a, a good fit.
Okay, so this is a resolution, so we've got a motion to second, we've had the public hearing, we've had discussion, so this will be a voice vote, okay? So all in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye. Yes, aye.
All right. All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right.
Be the six.
Be the six, okay.
Okay, Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. This time we'll open up the citizens' open forum. This is your opportunity to speak to the city council about anything that might be on your mind. Please give us your name and address for the record, and we will give you three minutes It's okay.
My name is Dr. Biblis, and I wonder
Can you give us your address real quick?
921 Bib.
Okay.
Your grandparents' neighbors.
I understand, I know that. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
I wonder what is happening with the indoor pool.
Sure.
I am missing
Absolutely, yeah. Well, you heard us speak, you alluded, we alluded to earlier, our Public Works Environmental Services and the area that we were hoping to, to grow our, some of our parks and rec facilities is that area that you would access off of Donahue Drive, right behind Boykin Community Center. And we're in the process of working through that, I'm gonna let the city manager clean this up, but we're working towards that right now. And Megan, can you kind of tell us where we are with the Public Works Environmental Services?
Absolutely. It's signaled with the indoor pools, and basically it was around December of 2019 when the discussion began. We went into COVID, but we still did a biennial budget last summer, and in the biennial budget last summer, the Boykin Community Center project, and we call it the, the Boykin Campus, was moved up. In order to facilitate that project, we first had to spend this, this fiscal year, the fiscal 2021, dining, environmental services and public works, and it includes our fleet services, which is across Donahue, a large and massive relocation project for those and under construction, we will begin a design of the Boykin Campus project, which includes multiple pools, a library, a museum, gymnasium space, workout space, all kinds of things. And we'll begin that design basically in the fall of, we call it fiscal year 22, but it's the fall of calendar year 21. That'll take approximately a year to design and then we'll go out to bid. So we wouldn't be under construction and we've got to move environmental services and public works. We would be under construction sometime in 2023 at the earliest with such a complex, delivering in sometime in '24 or sometime in fiscal 2024, calendar year 2024. So we are three to four years out at the fastest that we complex with delivery of that. And we do have fiscal challenges that come with that. This, this project is getting expensive quickly and it's something we'll be dealing with this summer with the adjustments, but there is not a timeframe in which we can deliver an indoor pool facility sooner because we have to move other city facilities that are in the way of this project.
Well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If you have any further questions, we'll be happy to answer them for you. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a move to adjourn?
I move.
We are adjourned.